Welcome, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, June 3rd. It's about 7:30 PM. June 13th.
So close.
Tuesday, June 13th. It's about 7:30 PM. We're here in Town Hall Room 206. Today, the Darien Girls' Carstein is playing, and they're in finals. I think they're winning, but I'm not sure what the final score is going to be. So I was supposed to be at that game, but I'm not. Also, just a editorial note. I have to leave in an hour. I'm picking up my daughter from the airport. She's flying from Spain, so her flight comes in at 10:00. So I will be leaving before the end of that. The first thing we're going to do is reorder the agenda. So can I get a motion to reorder the agenda? I want to move Seventeen Nickerson up first. Mike makes a motion. Adam makes the second. So we're going to move continuation of public hearing for Seventeen Nickerson to be the first item. I'm just going to read the introductory part. Continuation of public hearing, recording coastal site plan review number 372, flood damage prevention application number 436, landfilling reggrating application number 544, Mitchell and Kerry Ross at Seventeen Nickerson Lane. We are going to-
Immediately continue tonight. No testimony is going to be taken. We're going to do P&amp;Z to accommodate everyone. We'll have a special meeting next Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, at 8:00 PM in Room 119 of Town Hall. 119 is downstairs. And that'll be a special meeting of the commission. This will be one of the items on that agenda.
Fantastic. So if anybody in the audience here tonight is here for Seventeen Nickerson, we're going to continue that to next week. If anybody's watching on TV 79, we're not going to talk about Seventeen Nickerson today. Okay. The next item on the agenda, going back to the top, because tonight we have a public hearing and we have a general meeting. So the first public hearing, Adam, what do you speak about tonight, is special permit application number 329 A's and Apple, site plan, town of Darien, 40 and 46 Great Island, proposal to rent stables and associated questering facilities on Great Island to an outside operator with specialized expertise necessary to run a full-service show-stable for program activities, recreational use, within specific restrictions and limits. These indoor and outdoor facilities include an 18-stall granite stable, an indoor heated riding arena, an outdoor sand dressed dressage? Dressage? Thank you, everybody. Ring, a half-size polo field, as well as numerous paddocks and riding trails that comprise the facility. The operator of the facilities would be a full-service show-stable, offering full boarding and training of up to 23 horses, a riding lesson program, an animal therapy program, and summer children's programs. The 60.92-plus-or-minus-acre subject property is located on the east side of Goodwives River Road and Longmac Port Road, and consists of three separate lots identified as map 58 lots, 1- number 1- A, 13.5-plus-or-minus acres, map 58 lot 1, 45.94-plus-or-minus acres, and map 58 lot 1AA, 1.48 acres. That's the accessway in the R1 residential zone. The subject property is accessible via causeway at the southeastern terminus of Ringston Road from Goodwives River Road. That was the map there. Anything to add?
Yes. A letter of objection was sent to the Planning and Zoning Office on behalf of the Great Island Property Owners Association and the Ziegler Trust. I am a member of that association. Although I was not aware that that letter was going to be sent due to my affiliation with that association, I will be recusing myself.
Okay. Thank you very much. We still have a column, I think, right? One, two, three, four. Okay. Fantastic. We can still move forward. Thanks, Amy. We'll notify you when this thing comes back, because I'll be watching out for it, I think. Okay. Presenting, so Jeremy, what do we got?
Sure. I'll give the commission a little summary here about the application. As you all know, the town of Darien recently purchased the Great Island property off of Great Island Road and Ringston Road. There's a number of buildings out on the property you're familiar with, and one of those buildings is a stable. You have in your packets the May 11th, 2023, application of the town of Darien submitted by Town Administrator Kate Bush, who will be here tonight presenting the application. Describe the proposed uses, special permit application under section 404 of the Darien zoning regulations. You've received a number of emails from us that were uploaded to the portal, a number of letters and information in your packet, including information about a letter from me waiving the traffic study. In your packet, you also have a copy of the March 2022 Redness and Me survey of the entire Great Island property. That survey's here. We printed large versions if you need to see it. Fred has taken the liberty of highlighting the flood line and the coastal 100-foot setback line on that survey. We've received comments from the Darien Fire Marshal, Darien Health Department. I submitted a memo late today about how the commission has treated stormwater management waivers under section 880 in the past few years. You've also received a number of letters and submittals from Attorney John Nuff on behalf of the adjacent property owners, and he has brought in and hired solely engineering, and they submitted two documents, one relative to traffic and one relative to various submittals. We also got submittals from Mark Santagana on behalf of Serenity Stables. You may have seen one emailed earlier today about management of manure for horses and previous letters and emails regarding the operation of the stable. So with that, I have to answer any questions. Kate Bush is here to present and fill in any gaps and blanks, questions you may have.
Okay.
Who engaged Bob Maslin?
Bob Maslin was engaged by the Steinkrauses, the former owners, longtime owners of the property. Mr. Maslin, the Steinkrauses asked Mr. Maslin to trace back the history of the property. As you saw from Mr. Nuff's submittal, that at one point, there was a cease-and-desist order on this property relative to the stable use. Mr. Maslin was hired by the Steinkrauses to send me information regarding the history and whether the activities that were occurring were predated zoning. So if you've read through Mr. Maslin's submittal, you read a lot about the Ziegler's, their Olympic history. He mentions in there Prince Philip, talks about horses. I remember reading about in 1925, they had outsiders coming in to ride horses. They used the word outsiders. So it was very interesting, fascinating background about what was going on there. The stable building's been there a long time. As you know, if you've been in the building, the architect was the same architect that did Grand Central. So you have the curved tiled ceiling, and it's quite an architectural feat. And you have a letter in the file from Mary An Gastel, the town historian, relative to that building as well. So that's how Attorney Maslin got involved on behalf of the now prior owners, the Steinkrauses.
Fantastic. Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Bush, welcome. Nice to see you. You come to business about once a year?
No, I think this is my first time.
Oh, do you? Wow. All right. So the Ziegler's have been there for about 110 years?
Yes.
And the horses have been-
The horses.
And the horses have been there 110 years?
Yes.
But now you're going to ask if you're going to get a special permit for somebody that's been there for 110 years?
Yes. We're asking for the special permit to continue the limited use of the building for the horse program that's operated right now by Serenity Stables.
Can you just say your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Kathleen Lucca-Kay. Last name is Bush, B-U-C-H.
And your title and affiliation, please, please?
I'm the town administrator for the town of Darien.
Thank you.
So as I said, it's a relatively small program. It does not create a lot of traffic. There are a limited number of participants in the program, and the arrivals and departures are all staggered. In fact, you have to have an appointment to go even if you are boarding your horse, you have to have an appointment to go in and ride the horse. So it's very manageable, very controlled, and it is a use that has been existing with this company for some time and then previous to that. So what we're asking for is permission, because it is a residential zone, to allow that to continue.
Okay. So the narrative says that you're asking for a, the town is only requesting a two-year special permit at this time?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that copacetic, Jeremy?
Yes. It's a request for a limited time period, self-imposed by the applicant, right? The applicant has come forth with a two-year timeframe. So-
Does Town Council have to say it has to be permanent for life, or?
No. In a case like this where the applicant is-
The applicant's only asking for two.
The applicant's only asking for two years.
Okay. That's fine. And then after the two years, if you want him to stay, you'd come back?
We'd have to come back. We understand that.
Okay. So the proposal is to, it's an 18-stall horse, it's on limited riding trails. There's a thing in here that says the operator facility would like to full-service stables for up to 23 horses. So I guess there's more than 18 stalls. There's some, I mean, I went out there and looked at it. Some extra stalls that are there, indoor, outdoor?
I'm sorry, but I can't answer that.
Okay. We can get into it later. That's fine. I think the applicant might be here or something like that. I mean, the proposed lesson might be here. So it says lessons, we provide 13-minute sessions made by appointment only. I think this Quodco operator's been on the property since September of 2021.
Yes.
And the town bought it in-
May of '23.
Cinco de Mayo.
Cinco de Mayo.
I remember that. Okay. And do you remember when the property went on the market for sale?
When we purchased it?
No, no. When it first got on the market, because I think Jen Leahy was a commissioner there.
It went on the market for sale several years ago for like the entire, both pieces of the estate. Then it went on the market for sale again early '22?
Okay. Yeah. Because Jen Leahy was on the commission in November of '21, and she was the broker, the realtor. So she had to be up, so it had to be the end of '21, beginning of '22. So they've been here before the town even owned it?
Yes.
They've been up for-
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And so as part of your packet, you submitted a site survey, which is this, right? And I think, Jeremy, I'm an old-school guy. I tape all this stuff together. So you submit, this is your site plan or your survey that's required as part of the special permit application. We also got another thing, which is, I guess this is the subdivision map?
That is the old subdivision from the 1980s, which divided the property up into a number of pieces. Some of those are, or they were Steinkrause-owned.
Right.
Some of them are now Ziegler-owned. And as was mentioned earlier, there are two open space parcels owned by, to the north and south, the Great Island Property Owners Association or something like that.
Okay. And this also shows the five houses across the street on the south, well-
I'll call it the west side of Longmac Port Road.
Those are the five houses that are inside this Great Island Purpose Association?
That's correct.
And Mrs. Barzanti owns one of those houses, or is a member?
I believe so.
Okay. So this is from 1982, so, okay. Make the note, here it is. We got that. What else do we have inside here? Animal therapy program, nonprofit hours and use, we talked about that. It says the operator will authorize operations between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, seven days a week. A bit of 15 minutes between activities will be scheduled. Operator to alleviate any potential traffic concerns, we talked about that. So there's no change in intensity of the use or traffic since you've been about there?
No.
Right? And the horse has been there, like I said, for 110 years. Zoning compliance in the back. Social, cultural, recreational for community benefit or convenience, not including activities controlled by property. Now, the town has a couple other properties that they own that they lease. Are you familiar with those, like the Nature Center?
Yes.
And the Darien Boat Club?
Yes.
Is that all similar to something like this? I mean, I don't care what the rent is. We don't really, we don't care about numbers.
Well, yes, they are. And there are other programs where we operate on town properties, where we hire outside agencies or OTC firms to run programs, such as the youth soccer program that runs on the front hall, front Town Hall fields.
And then what about like when Uncle's Deli is at the Weed Beach and those guys?
Same kind of thing. We also hire somebody to run the kayak rentals.
That's the thing, it's over at Weed Beach?
That's at Weed Beach. And we are, we have in the past, and we are trying again to hire someone to run concessions at the train stations.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So that's all leases or operating that you do in town-owned properties?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. And all those, I mean, I think at the time, I know Cherry Lawn's a special permit, Middlesex Club is a special permit, Center Residential Woodways is a special permit, Center Residential Zone. Weberd is a special permit, Center Residential Zone.
This is.
Ox Ridge Hunting Racking Club, or whatever they call it today, is a special permit, Center Residential Zone.
Highland Farms is.
Highland Farms is a park instead of residential zone?
It is not a park.
It's not a park. It's a field, right?
Yes. And Town Hall is a special permit in a residential zone.
Okay. But the ones that have leases are the ones we just-
But we, yeah. Well, not all of them have leases, but some of them have programs that we run.
License agreements or something?
Yes.
Is there anything I'm missing, Jeremy? If you can stick it off the top of your head?
Anything?
Nothing off the top of my head.
Okay. All right. Then inside here, inside the packet, and I'm just going to go, we got a whole bunch of stuff in this, so I just want to kind of go as quickly if you don't mind. We got a letter here from Mary Ann Gastel, who's a town historian. A lot of times she chimes in. At the end, she says, "The asylum does have some history that could be recorded. Perhaps some committees would be considered taking a collection of the materials, images, and the family stories to replace in future rooms. I would be pleased to give you some architecture studies, perspectives, and charity ideas." So she's fine with what we're doing here?
Yes. That's, I don't concur. April 22nd, 2023 was the date of her letter.
Okay. Then next thing I have here is you, as manager of course, for special permit, we send this out to the Public Works and Fire Marshal and Building Department and Health Department, Traffic Department, and all those guys. We got a letter back here from David Kanah.
Darien Health Department. That's correct.
And then at the end of the day, anyway, you're helping out, but these guys probably should have the answer, I think. The honesty of septic system is very old and needs to be assessed. I think there's only one bathroom inside this whole barn that you're going to lease?
That was my recollection, is there's one bathroom in the barn to accommodate folks who are in the stable using that. Again, there's other buildings on the property, but again, we're only talking about the stable tonight because that's the only special permit being required, being requested and required. And the lessons are about 30 minutes each.
Okay.
So, you know, we've seen that with, at least my experience, I've seen lots of programs in Darien where people come, they watch their child participate in some activity or sport. Sometimes the parents stay, sometimes the parents go and come back. But in any case, they're there for a very limited time.
There's no, are there any spots for visitors or spectators on the property? I can't sit down and watch my kid take a ride on this, right?
There's limited parking.
It's exactly parking for the current uses.
Yeah. But it's not really designed for people to, it's not like a game, like you referred earlier today to a cross game, where you'll get fans and spectators when you're giving a small riding lesson or something like that. There's, people aren't coming as spectators. It's people who have made the appointment are there.
Right.
And maybe the parent is waiting for the half hour, but there's no other people coming.
Right.
And they're there for a very limited time.
Okay. And that half polo field, they don't play polo on that polo field, right?
No.
That's where they have the jump stuff there?
Yes.
Because I can see it from Ziegler's Co.
Right. And the horses can go out there and-
Practice.
Practice.
Okay. Then on here, it says permits of manure management will be needed. David, we have an answer to that, right, from, I think-
Right. We received a letter earlier today that was from Mark Santagana.
I think he's here today.
He's here tonight with information about how the manure is taken care of and addressed, and you have a copy of that.
We'll check on that. Then the town historian was checked. The fire marshal is-
He sent an email earlier today.
Yep.
Which again was emailed in to you.
He sent one a year ago too, right?
Yes.
Do you have a copy in the file?
Yeah, I got it here.
I know there's a copy that Mike has over here in the blue folder.
Yep.
That's this one. This one says, I guess this was the first time it came up, July 12th, 2022, the fire marshal said, "Increases beyond current use activities will necessitate improvements for fire protection capabilities." So you have, you're not changing any use, right?
Not at this time, no.
The fire marshal submitted comments back in 2022 in connection with the original application that was submitted for the use of the stables. And we received another set of comments from the fire marshal this afternoon, which we emailed out to you, and Mike, you have those over there.
Okay. Yeah, I got it here. So it says, "Here are my dear friend Jeremy here, my comments, Darien Payne referral, Great Island, 40 and 46 Great Island. Depending on the use of the property, upgrades may be required to provide better fire protection for the property. The use of the property is not changing, so you're not doing anything."
Not at this time.
Okay. That's fine. All right. I got that. This is from you, Jeremy. I guess it was to Monica on May 10th. You waived staff waiver on the traffic study?
Correct.
Special permits Darien require traffic study and thus specifically waived by the planning and zoning director? So there's no change in traffic, there's no change in use?
No.
So we waived it, right? And we do that all the time for like Goodwives. Okay. Then we have a memo that stated today with regards to stormwater management. Cut to my attention. Regulations 888 allows Payne's own commission to waive one or more provisions of 880 under one of more circuit tests. It's one of these due to scope nature, amount of work proposed within the application. So we're not changing anything of the property, right?
There's no new construction proposed.
Okay.
Like no new buildings, no blasting, no grading.
No nothing.
They're going to take the existing building.
With the one existing bathroom.
And the horses that are there, and the structure as is, indoor riding ring, the outdoor riding ring. That's it.
Okay. One thing just came up in my mind. There's multiple apartments at that building?
Yes.
I think there's three?
I'm not sure the total number, but I believe there are two that are occupied.
And one is included with the operator, is what I was told? And there was a second person that is outside the operator?
There's one that is not affiliated with the stables. There's one that is. I wouldn't say included with, it is a separate lease.
It's a separate lease, but-
But it's two employees of the stables.
Okay.
Or two stables with their employees.
Are they married, or are they two separate apartments?
I'm sorry?
Are the two employers married?
I don't know how many employees are in there.
Okay. That's fine. We got something to help you out. That's all right. Right. So that's stormwater management. And then, do you want to go over the flood map? Because I printed out flood maps too, and this thing's not in a flood zone at all.
Well, you want to do it?
I can put them up, actually.
Okay. So what we have is an updated survey from Redness and Me. Fred, the date, if I ran, or the bottom right is March of 2022 or '23?
The original survey was prepared by Redness and Me dated March 1, 2022.
March, please, in the file, please.
And was last updated by Redness and Me on May 4, 2023. So that's about a month ago. The survey is broken into multiple sheets.
Do you want to put it up on the inside? So even if you can see it?
This is the survey, or the portion of the survey that shows the stable building. We've outlined the flood boundary in green and outlined the critical coastal area management boundary, which is 100 feet from meet-in-high water in blue. And the stable building is highlighted in red or pink. And as you can see from this survey site plan, the stable building is entirely outside of the flood boundary as well as outside of the critical 100-foot coastal area management review area.
So we got, so this advocate's got nothing to do with the camera view, so we don't need to worry about that? And it's not in any flood zone, so we don't need to worry about that?
Correct. And there's no new construction. You know, unlike many applications the commission may see where there's work in the flood zone, a new house, a deck. You saw one a couple weeks ago for a deck being constructed in the flood zone. You had to review it relative to the flood regulations. That doesn't come into play here because there's no new construction and no work in the flood zone.
It's a use. It's a special permit.
It's a use change. And again, no new construction relative to, and I think that's why I wrote, I know that's why I wrote the coastal waiver letter as well. There's no new construction going on. Whereas the commission looks at routinely reviews work for houses in the coastal area. In fact, Seventeen Nickerson, the prior application was for a single-family residence to be constructed in a coastal area. Commission's under your jurisdiction to review that under section?
So when a tenant changes, like Goodwives Shopping Center, it's a parking issue, and it's a special permit because you assess the services, and that's in a flood zone, right?
Yes.
We don't get traffic reports, we don't get, we don't get cam review, we don't get anything special thing for that, right? It's a tenant, right? What tenant's going out?
It's a tenant. It's a swap, and there's no construction. If, in the case of Goodwives, maybe there's a little internal minor work, but in that case, oftentimes if it's retail to retail, it's just a simple tenant swap out.
Okay. Which is similar to this, do you think?
I think in many ways it's similar.
All right. Then I think somebody submitted a thing about the special permit, we already went, the two-year special permit thing, but we already went over that in Town Council. It said two years is fine.
That's correct. You have a number of letters from John Nuff, who was present tonight, which I referred to earlier, and those have been submitted for the record. I think there's a number of submittals from John and his team.
Okay. If you could stick around for a second. I'm going to want to see if Mark's here, who represents a tenant, if he wants to speak. But before, before, does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Bush? Okay.
Oh, I might come up with one, yeah.
Do I go now, while she's here?
Yeah.[1649.52]
All right.
You could probably ask her, which is longer. So you know my issue, my concern. You had said flat out in your narrative, understanding that the use must be one for a social, cultural, and recreational uses, serving a community need, convenience, and not including any activity carried on primarily for profit. How is this stable not primarily for profit?
We are not a profit-making entity.
I understand we're not, but the stable is.
But this is similar to other things that we have done, where we hire for-profit entities to provide a recreational service or a musical-
Even if you hire somebody to serve sandwiches at Weed Beach, we're primarily a beach. The Boat Club is primarily a boat club, and we may have some stake in some facilities, you know, putting in boats and whatnot. Country Clubs are civic and social organizations. Some of them, I think, may even be nonprofit, but hard as that may be, but, so they're, they have their special reasons for existing. But this, if we're talking about the stables, now, Mr. Nuff made the, the argument that we're not actually talking only about the stable property, but we're talking about the whole 60 acres.
Yeah, I don't understand why. We're not talking about the whole 60 acres, we're talking about the stables.
Okay, well, I guess because it's not in a separate lot. It hasn't been divided from any of the rest of the property. So if this special permit is assigned to the, to the property, it's for all 60 acres, I guess. That would be his argument anyway, but he can explain that whenever he wants. But, so, what, what, the town is getting rent, but that's it. We don't typically rent out something where they are, somebody else is making the profit. And, and as I say, the beach is a beach. This is a stable. The owner gets the profit, right? How is it not primarily for profit?
Because we are not a profit-making entity. It's, it's no different than, to me, than renting out the room at, or the kitchen at the beach to Uncle's Deli, or renting out the space where the kayak rentals are held, or renting out the train stations where the concessions can be sold, or renting out the front field at Town Hall for an outside soccer agency to run a program.
You're not, you're not in the business of running, you're not in the business of running concession stands at Weed Beach, right?
No.
And you're not in the business of running-
That's why we need to hire someone to provide this kind of service. We are not in the business of giving horseback riding lessons.
Right.
So if we want to provide that kind of activity for our residents, we need to hire another entity to do that.
And at Weed Beach, we are not primarily in the business of serving sandwiches. And at the Boat Club, we're not there primarily to put boats in the water.
Oh, I don't know about that. There's 250 boats. There's a lot of boats at a beach.
All right.
Including mine.
Is that a profit-making enterprise? I doubt it.
It costs me a lot of money to be there.
It is primarily, the, the stable is primarily to be a stable and make money. The other things you're talking about, the field here is a recreational field owned by the town, and we can have anybody we want to run it, that's fine. But the field is ours, and we're not, it's not there primarily for profit, certainly not for the town's profit, or anybody's profit.
But George, to take that argument further, the barn's just a barn.
Right.
It's a business.
No, it's a barn.
Mike, it's operating currently illegally as a business.
Did you read Bob Maslin's mail?
Yeah. So what did he tell us about how, when it was a commercial operations-
We can, we can deliver this later, but I-
Well, I needed the town's answer, I guess, on that, and we can agree to disagree.
Yeah.
Doesn't add up.
There's no profit-sharing agreement between the town and the stable, is there?
No, there's not.
It'll just be, the lease is, you lease for X dollars a month, they pay the lease, and that's the end of it.
Yes.
So we, the town, are facilitating the profit of an organization.
But we do that, we do that everywhere.
Tried not to do. That would be the purpose of this. I, I just want to abide by what I'm reading here. I really don't have any bone to pick with this stable, or the town, you know, leasing it out. But I am a stickler for the detail of this regulation. So that's what I will have in my head.
At, at the beaches, is it Uncle's Deli that's a tenant?
You know, I'm not quite sure. We-
It changes like every year, right?
On a regular basis, so I'm not quite sure who the tenant is going, is this summer.
Oh, you haven't done it yet?
No, we've done it. I'm just not, you know, it's not one of the things that's-
It's budget season's over, so you like to-
They should also highlight what, what has been brought to our attention. I, I think I knew it, and I even commented that a cease and desist order had been issued against this facility, because it's a commercial for-profit organization. Now, that was filed more than a year ago, was not apparently acted upon, but all I can tell you is that the town specifically stated, "You cannot stay there. You've got to prove to us that you are not a for-profit entity, or you can't be there." Obviously, internal things happened, and it didn't get enforced. And that's, I guess, not my purpose. But there are letters here signed by Jeremy, I believe, or Mr. Herve Hammond, our zoning enforcement person. So somebody else believed, with the town, believed that this is not an appropriate use of that facility.
Okay. You want to comment on that now? Because I think that also came up in Mark Santangia's email today.
Santa Gama.
I'm sorry. I know Nick Vee, he's a working, he's a good guy. Something came, I guess, in 19, in 2000, in 1999?
Right.
Soundview Stables was there, and he references that in his letter.
That's correct.
And we had nothing to do with it at the time. Yeah, okay.
Right. For a little background, and you've read Mr. Maslin's information in terms of the history of what's been going on there.
I didn't read this, 44 pages, sorry.
In 1999, there was, a question came up about, about the stable. And there's two letters from 1999. The first letter, which is the, called the inquiry letter. "Hey, it appears something's going on here. Tell us more." And, again, this is 25 years ago, basically.
It's April 9, 2019, from, and it's signed by Dave Keating, who's the CEO at the time.
Correct.
Okay.
And there was a subsequent letter written by me saying-
Yes, yep.
"Based on what you've told us, hey, sounds okay," is the gist of that. Unfortunately, I didn't write down exactly what she told me at the time, to say, "Oh, at the time, this is exactly what's going on." But I-
You apparently learned, as far as you could tell, it was not a for-profit enterprise. Because that's what you were investigating, right?
We were investigating what was going on. Dave and I spoke to Ms. McKinney at the time. I don't recall if I went to the property or didn't go to the property, but then I wrote this subsequent letter saying, I'll call it, "Seems okay."
Having reviewed it with council.
Having reviewed it with council.
I'll just read for a second, if you don't mind. It says, "After meeting with town council, we've concluded that the existing stable is an existing non-conforming use, and Soundview Stables is not a commercial stable and/or riding instruction facility as only horses on the property, and those which are stored in the property are only horses being trained by Mrs. McKinney, which has kept, which has kept at the stables. Therefore, Soundview Stables operates in compliance with the zoning regulations."
That's what I wrote ahead of that. Okay. So now, the town is here today, requesting a special permit under section 404, and-
Well, yeah, you were gonna comment on the cease and desist, I think.
Right. And then, what, about a year ago, two years ago, some matters were pointed out to us. Herve wrote the letter. Certainly, I was aware of what Herve was, you know, we were in close contact at the time. We reached out to the Steinkrauses, the owners at the time. Soon after that, or somewhere in that vicinity, they were in the process of selling the property. Of course, we see common in our business, oftentimes, people get an utter notice of violation, or cease and desist, or whatever it is, and they put their house, or building, or whatever on the market, oftentimes, that resolves it. They're, they're leaving, they're taking their whatever with them, done, solved. In this case, Town of Darien bought the property, understood the letter, saw the letter, and said, "Well, we have the right to apply for a special permit. Yeah, you have the right to apply to the commission, and, you know, present the evidence they're presenting tonight, submit information, background, so the commission understands what's being proposed, and take it from there."
Okay, so it was dropped at that point, but the demand was made in the latest letter, I think, in June of 22, that the Steinkrauses produce evidence that they, that this, or, yeah, I guess it was addressed to the Steinkrauses, that they produce evidence this was not a for-profit organization. And as far as I can tell from the correspondence, that never happened.
We, we do invite any, I'll call it, anybody who receives a cease and desist order or notice of violation, "Hey, if you can prove to us this predate zoning, that would be great. We give everyone a fair shot, and say, 'Look, if you can provide evidence that this isn't, hey, this may have received a permit in the past,' or, 'Oh, this predate zoning,' or whatever circumstances there are, we give everyone a fair shake.'" And so that's where I believe, and I'm not certain, that the Steinkrauses likely hired Bob Maslin to do just that. "Bob, can you research?" And Bob did, gave me the courtesy of calling and said, "Steinkrauses have asked me to research and try to prove to you that this use predate zoning. Great, Bob."
Of course. It, it doesn't prove any such thing, because, you know, there's no indication about whether they were operating a business, but when Mr. Ziegler built this, I don't think he did it to make money. I think he did it to take care of his horses and the family interest in equine activities. So, and there's nothing to the contrary to indicate that here. So, and I think it's also notable, just, you know, the idea of the services that we provide at the Boat Club, or at the beach, or whatnot, is for the public. And I think I saw from Mr. Santagata's letter, maybe half of the people using these facilities now are Darienites, so that's not terribly helpful either. All right, further deliberation.
Yep, perfect. Okay. Well, all right. Kate, would you mind if we brought up Mark Santagata?
No.
Santagata?
Poor guy.
Okay. I stink it now. No, I can't even pronounce my own name. I call it Ovani, my brother calls it Old Vani, so who knows?
Good evening.
Welcome, sir.
How are you?
Good, thanks. We received a couple of letters from you. It says, "I'm running behalf of Serenity Shows Stables, Inc. So if we're here for you."
Okay.
What's going on?
Thank you. I appreciate that. As has been-
Can you say your name and affiliates?
Sure. I apologize for the record. Mark Santagata of Kakes, Tush, and Santagata in Stamford. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Serenity Stable, Inc. We, we've kind of touched on a couple of different avenues here, and I don't want to get into the weeds by any means, but certainly, I, I don't think you can ignore the history of this property. I, I think if you look at Mr. Maslin's package, one of the things that he does establish there is, through a newspaper article, that predates zoning, is that there were lessons being offered on the property at the stable to outsiders. That's how it's referred to. So this is a use that's by no means new. It's been around since the stable was built in 2013, I'm sorry, 1913. And the outside lessons were being provided in 1925, prior to the adoption of the zoning regulations by the town. And there is nothing going on there now that wasn't going on in 1999, when Mr. Ginsburg took a look at the situation and deemed it compliant with zoning and allowed it to continue. The operation at Soundview Stables that existed in 1999 is the same use that exists today at Serenity. They're boarding horses, they're providing training, they're providing lessons. And it's a historic use that's been continuous for more than 100 years. The, the facility is one that certainly should not sit vacant without this special permit. What you're basically doing is shuttering the stable and, and turning a historic, useful facility that can continue the legacy that preceded it, and, and turning it into an abandoned structure. I, I don't think that benefits anyone. The, the town will be receiving rent, but otherwise not profiting, in the same way that any of the concessions that are leasing space from the town were, in the same fashion that any other lessee in a town facility is providing revenue to the town through its operations. That's exactly what Serenity will be doing.
Yeah, but it, it, no disrespect, but if the town decides to not have horses there, you know, after leases of them, there's no horses. The town wants to convert that thing to a, you know, to a restaurant, they, the town can do that. They can do whatever they want.
Well, I, I mean-
It's not shuttering it. There's a bunch of shuttered houses there. But, I mean, that's not really the, the nature of what we're talking about here. We're trying to get the, we're trying to see if the special permit use for what it's being there, used today for the last 110 years is okay. You know, what happens after whatever this two-year special permit is, that's a whole, we're not gonna worry about that at this point.
Right. I, I-
But what you just stated, it talks about, in your, page two of your letter, all these other people, I mean, in 1999, I guess, Soundview Stables was there, and then there was Lucy McKinney was there, which is Twin Bay Stables, and then Joff Teal boarded trainer on the island. So it, it sounds like after, I mean, I, I know that Serenity Stables only got there in September of 21.
Correct.
Before the property on the market was sold, they've only been there for, I don't know, it's like 12 months or so, probably?
2021. We have, because it's, everything's more than 100 years old, we'll need to distinguish. 2021.
2021, yes. So there's been other people there that have operated at the time. And do you, is, it's, do they, does Serenity Stables have a, did they have a lease with the Steinkrauses to you now?
They, they did not. Shortly, the, the marketing process was underway when Serenity took occupancy at the property shortly after Serenity-
The prior marketing process, because it did hit the market with, with Douglas Allman until December of 21, and Serenity started in September 21.
In September of 21, right. But, but the fact, the, the fact that the Steinkrauses were contemplating a sale of the property, and, and then after Serenity began its occupancy of the property, entered into an agreement with the Town of Darien, that precluded further discussion of a lease.
But leases, that has to-
So, so they, they were a tenant, but they were not a tenant under any agreement.
Okay, so they paid rent, but they didn't have a formal lease?
Correct, correct.
Isn't the real issue whether the principal use was for profit prior to 1925? Really doesn't matter post-25, because we know zoning regs were in place, and whether they enforced or not, that's a different issue. But to be grandfathered on a non-conforming use, they had to be doing it prior to 1925, right?
Yeah, but that's a question for us, I forget.
Well, I think he testified, though, that they did.
I, I, I think that, that use was, was present, dating back at least until the construction of the facility in 1913. And again, from Attorney Maslin's findings, there were lessons being offered to outsiders, not just the Zieglers, on the property, prior to the adoption of zoning. So it would appear that the use has been consistent and longstanding and predates zoning regulations.
Well, it needs to have been Mr. Ziegler's principal use for profit prior to 1925, between 1913 and 25.
I, I, I don't know that anybody can speak to whether the principal purpose was for profit, but-
We know Mr. Ziegler had, you know, he didn't need the money.
Okay, let's get, let's get back to where we, "Great Island operated by Serenity's capacity of 20, 23 horses, present 23 horses and reds for care by Serenity Stables, and there's eight employees." So there's eight employees. Do you know how many people live there?
Two.
There's two people. Are they married or not married?
I, I don't know their marital status.
Okay. And so they occupy one apartment?
Yes, they're married. One apartment.
So the two people live in one apartment, okay? And there's two other apartments of the building. There's a total of three in the building. One, I think, is empty. Is that to your knowledge, or?
My, my knowledge is that there are two occupied apartments, one vacant apartment.
Okay.
One of the occupied apartments is occupied by employees of Serenity.
Okay. And then on the next page of the 23 horses now, and this letter's dated May 11th, there's 14 are currently off-site location. I went out there today, and I counted probably 15 noses. So that's a moving target, it sounds like?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
We're not, we don't have to get into the weeds on how many cars are there. Daily traffic is minimal. Serenity operates in places where two live on the site, do not commute for work. There's two cars, they have two cars there. About the hay and all that stuff that comes in, the, the hay just comes in on the truck and sits there, or hay goes, the hay, the hay deliveries and the shavings?
Yes. They would be moved as appropriate to stalls or where the hay would be needed, but, but it's generally stored in one area.
So that's not a big traffic generator, people bringing in that hay and stuff like that?
No, no.
I think we already talked about the maneuver going out. What is this? Owners are only allowed, permitted to single ride for half an hour per day. So if I own a horse there, I can only ride the house with horse for a half hour?
That's correct.
Okay, that's pretty strict.
And, and they're carefully scheduled. The riding sessions have to be separated by a certain period of time, so that the grooms can prepare for the next rider.
Right.
And so this is a very regimented system, and it does not generate much traffic, because not much traffic is permitted.
Okay. So it says here, "Prearranged ride schedules kept spaced at intervals that permit rooms prepared." I think it's 15 minutes between the rides. Can my kids go sign up for a lesson aid? Do you guys have a scheduling book? Because we go over this for, relative to parking for like barber shops, and there's like, you know, 18 chairs, and there's two employees, that means there's 16 people, there's only parking. But can my kid go in and take a riding lesson if I sign up in advance?
You're, you're, it would be accessible to you to- You're, you're, it would be accessible to you to give a riding lesson, but that doesn't mean that like a barber shop, there are 18 people waiting in the wings for their turn to get on a horse. Those are arranged in advance, scheduled in advance, and the lessons are provided, and then the people leave the property and the next lesson would come on. So it's not like a crowd of folks waiting for their turn at a horse.
Because like, it's, I actually wanted one of my kids to be a horseback rider, and I looked into Ox Ridge, but you have to join the club to be there. Do you have to join anything here for a kid to take a lesson?
Open to the public. You can call, you have to make the arrangements, you have to be scheduled, but there's no membership requirement.
Okay.
Would that be the same for the, I'll call it the animal therapy program, also by appointment only?
Correct. That's offered at a limited schedule, a regular schedule, two days a week, and, and that is not something that takes place continuously throughout operating hours.
So there are a total of 35 lessons offered a week, fewer than six per day over the course of the stable's operating hours. So if a lesson's only a half an hour, that means six per day, that's three hours.
Correct.
So there's only, there's only someone there for three hours a day? That's it?
Well, again, the, the lessons have to be staggered-
Right.
-so that the horses can be prepared, and so the three hours may be spread out over the course of several hours. But basically, three hours of riding lessons a day.
Okay.
Can I add something to that?
Not yet.
And, and I'm sorry, this is Ruth Nicodinos of Serenity Stables.
You can bring her in if she wants an extra question. I just want to, I'm just going to go to the other person. I've got a boat at Dairy and Boat Club, and I paid, whatever I paid for it. If that thing sinks, it's my fault, and I have to have insurance. So you have a paragraph in there with regards to each owner boards a horse at training is required to insure their animals. Typically such insurance covers illness mortality, da-da-da-da, and agreements. So you guys make sure all your horses have insurance, the same way my boat has insurance?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, Ruth Nicodinos, and the owner of Serenity Stables.
Your name's, first name on the letter. There you go. Welcome.
Thank you. Just to add to what Mark was saying about the riding during the day and the lessons only taking up three hours on certain days, you know, the people that come and ride their horses, they don't come every day. So a lot of times, the instructors will ride the horses, and that's why there's only certain lessons scheduled throughout the day, and the others get ridden professionally.
So the instructors are like those, any employees?
Correct.
Like if I had a horse that your employee would ride my horse?
Correct. If you come on a day, then yes, we ride it for you.
So it's like the guy at Dairy and Boat Club taking my boat out for a jog, right?
I don't know. I don't know boats.
I don't know if I can do that, bud. It does need gas once in a while, that's true. Idea of an inclusive, all right, so here, on the last page, it says, Serenity Traffic by Stable, you started September '21 when you first got there, there were 12 horses. And in August of '22, you got up to 25 horses, and then now you're, in April, you were 18 horses. So, I mean, there's 18, I counted it, there's nine stables on one side, nine stables on the other side, that's 18. And then you have the one in the front, which has been there for, did you put that there or somebody else?
No, that was put there at the last time.
Okay, so you had, okay, and then there was other stables on the outside? That's if my horse gets sick, you stick it outside?
Sometimes if they have allergies, they live outside. It's better for them to have fresh air. So we have two stalls that are outside.
Okay, and did you run those?
No.
They've been there for?
Correct.
Okay, they're not, they're, they're adequate for the horse, but no horse complains?
No, nobody complains.
Do you need an approval for 23 horses? Or can you just need for 18?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I, I, I think the capacity of the stable is 23. There have been times when there have been 23 horses on site. It made sense to use the facility to its maximum capacity, but that does not mean that there will always be 23 horses at the stable or 23 riders coming on and off the property to ride those 23 horses. So I, I think the difference between 18 horses based on the number of stalls or 23 horses does not contribute significantly to any of the traffic or the use of the property in terms of people coming on and off the island.
Because there was a guy who came in a couple of weeks ago, he asked for 114 seats for outside dining. We granted him 60 or 65 or something like that. So you're asking for 23. There's, I guess there's 20, there's 23 official stalls, right?
Currently, right now, there are 22 horses in the program. It's been as small as 11 or 12 when we came in, and as big as 25. But currently, right now, there are 22 horses, six of which are up at Saratoga Springs.
You race up there?
No, I don't race. There's a horse show up there.
My sister-in-law's got a, got a box at Saratoga. I've never been invited to the record.
It's supposed to be a lot of fun. I'm usually busy at the horse show, so I'll get to it.
All right, so that's your first letter. Then you sent another letter today that, oh, this, yeah, you can answer this one. You want to help me out with this one, Mark?
Sure.
Questions raised with regard to disposal waste management for Serenity Stables, they referenced. So you want to just explain how this works? Because so at the end of the day, you're going to have to get this signed off by the health department, but since you wrote the letter, you might as well.
Sure. There is a 30-yard dumpster on site.
Right.
That dumpster is where all of the waste that's collected from the property goes into the dumpster. Once per week, at 6:30 in the morning, a truck comes, takes the old dumpster away, drops a new clean dumpster, and the collection process starts again. So none of the waste is allowed to remain on the property. It's removed weekly, and if it's necessary for, because of an excessive amount of waste for pickup to take place more than once a week, then a phone call to the waste management company results in a pickup within 24 hours.
It's the same day as a restaurant. You had a great weekend.
Yeah, you have a heavy, heavy use, and they'll come take it out right away. The dumpster is 100 yards from the barn. It's about 300 yards from any edge of the property. So it's sufficiently isolated, so it doesn't cause a problem for anyone.
Can we see where it is on the map?
Fred was out there, you want to try to, or maybe you can do it, Ruth, just show us where you think it is relative to the barn.
Especially to the flood zone line?
Yeah, I wouldn't want it to be near the flood zone.
It's somewhere back.
Can you put that up, just for the guys on TV?
Sure.
So that's the, that's the riding ring?
Right, that's the indoor ring, so it's just about here.
Okay.
So it's not even close to the flood zone line?
In the flood zone line, that's the blue and green.
Okay, yeah, no, it's over here.
Okay.
It's over here.
Okay, that's fine.
So presumably, it never floods, the area where you store the refuge?
Correct.
Right? It's like, you don't ever observe flooding from the storm or any, even, because we had some big storms two years ago, you didn't see any flooding in that area, like the horse-
No, 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 not at all.
-refuge being carried off into Long Island Sound.
No, not at all.
Okay. So I mean, I guess Kate, when they do the lease, they might want to, if they do the lease, you know, make sure that the health department likes where the thing is. Because that's what he requested. What else? Then I think you sent in another, oh, this is the other email with regards to Ruth with the hearing tonight. A touch is historic from Robert Maslin on behalf of the Steinkrause family. This is the two letters, and then Robert Maslin's 44-page memo, which, sorry, Bob, I didn't read the whole thing. I kind of scared. I was kind of sort of running out of time, but you guys have any questions for the lawyer or Mr. Ruth?
No, I think my main question was, one, that the horse refuge can't go into the sound, and then you answered it earlier that the, the stables are for use by the public within, you know, obviously a pre-arranged time to go riding and stuff, but there's no membership or sort of club or restriction or privatization of it at all. So it's still a public use.
Absolutely.
So I could take a lesson?
You sure can.
Kentucky can take a lessons, if the matter.
Good.
In Lexington.
I get it.
Yeah.
Membership.
Yeah. And my kid could, okay. Anything, George?
Just for the record on my favorite topic, you are a for-profit business organization, right?
I, I, I think the practical necessity is-
Lawyer.
She's got to, she's got to generate revenue to pay the bills. She's got 23 horses on the property. She's got to take that waste away. She's got to bring the hay in.
It's a business.
What's an incorporated, what's an incorporated, Alex, LLC?
It has revenue.
It's incorporated.
And-
You're not a nonprofit organization, is that fair to say?
It is not a 501(c)(3), although the portion of the operation-
The therapy program.
-that provides therapy is a not-profit.
That's the therapy for, and project, that's the therapy for, like, army men with PS, what is it called?
PTSD.
PTSD, anybody with trauma, any trauma survivor.
So it's a person.
First responders, veterans, wives, children.
Okay. I thought it might have been for a horse. Does a horse get PTSD or whatever?
It can, yeah.
It's a horse, all right. I don't know. They might. They break their leg, you know? They want to still be stud.
Just kill them.
Okay. All right, and then we, is the mandatory referral inside this file?
Nope, that was in a different file. The commission acted on that and issued a report a few weeks ago, was not really part of this file.
Okay. So what the mandatory first is, you're subject to, coupled with the tenant, such tenants, limited use of the bridle trails, riding rings, wash stalls, and the, and the apartments above the stables and single-family houses. Do you have riding rings? I mean, bridle trails?
I've heard about bridle trails. I was never told specifically where they are or what they are. We typically go from the barn, down to the ring, and back. We take the occasional walk down the road to the beach for a change of scenery, but I was always told about bridle trails. I don't know where they are. We don't go onto the neebers, lawns, front yards, backyards, any of that.
So when you walk down to, that's where the fireboat dock is?
Correct.
So when you walk, that's all asphalt, right?
Yes, when we walk around the side. There's the grass hill down to it. Sometimes we go that way, sometimes we just go around.
Okay. What happens when a horse poops when he's walking down the?
We clean it up. We put it in the dumpster. It's taken away on Fridays.
There you go. Okay, anything else for these guys? All right, it's pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next one, I wanted to, because I'm, I mean, I guess I'm running out of time, but the planning commission got a letter from John Vasily, Vasili?
Vasili, yes.
Can you explain that to us? I think it went to you guys today.
Yes, that was submitted today. Yes, I can explain that letter. As you saw on the map you held up earlier, Steve, which is the subdivision from the 1980s. That subdivision shows, I believe, 19 different lots that were subdivided at that time, which is about 35, 40 years ago now. And it created lots on both, I'll call it the east side of Long Neck Point Road, as well as the west side of Long Neck Point Road. There's, as I remember, five houses on the west side between Long Neck Point Road and Pear Tree Point Road. Those houses, my belief, are part of the Great Island Property Owners Association.
That's what this guy says in his letter.
And they own two parcels adjacent to these parcels. They were notified, the association was notified of this application.
Okay.
Similar to many associations in town, whether it's the Tokenik Association, the Orton Bay Association, Salem Straits Association, there's lots of associations, you know, might go to a PO box, or the president of the association, or whoever. Mr. Vasili, in his letter says, hey, by the way, I'm a member of the association, and I wanted to let you know, commission, that there are a number of us. We are now aware of this application. And I think in his letter, we are, he's saying to the president, just keep us informed of what's going on. Keep in mind, Mr. President of the association, there are up to 17 owners of these parcels.
Which is that 17?
I don't think at this point there are. I think there's a lot less than 17. It might be more like six, Mr. Vasili being one of them.
So the great, it says, the great owner purposes is an entity that includes not only Ziegler's properties, but also the five property entities, 1, 2, 3, and 4, which is here, that are not affiliated to, and we are one of those owners. So-
Yes.
-he was not notified by the Great Island Property Association that this was going on?
I don't know. Notice was properly sent-
Right.
-to the Great Island Property Owners Association, to wherever they want their mail sent.
Okay.
Mr. Vasili's saying, hey, I'm part of the, I'm part of the group. I'm part of the association. And he's saying, we, you know, here's the point. The association is not just the Ziegler's-
Right.
-but it's some other people as well. It's five of us as well who are on the other side of the street. And we are, he says it here in the letter, we are not Ziegler's, nor are we Steinkrauses, nor are we the town of Darien. There are five other people who just happen to own property across the street. And what he's saying is, we have certain rights as members. Again, this is not the commission's business.
Right.
We talked about that as part of a prior application, that whatever arrangements the association has are not subject to zoning. And what he's saying is-
So is it, oh, we have no firsthand knowledge of the issue before the board. That means the board of directors for the association, right?
Yeah. And so what he's saying is, just keep us in the loop. And if there's any actions proposed to be taken by the association that needs our vote, we're here, ready to vote when you may need us, association. And that's, that's it.
So do we know if Mr. Vasily's here?
Mr. Vasili.
Mr. Vasili.
I do not think he is here.
Okay.
I don't know.
When we open up the public, we can find out. Okay. All right, that, to me, was odd. All right, anything else we're missing before we open it up to the general public? Okay. Anything else? Well, I mean, the applicant made their presentation, the tenant represented lawyer for the tenant made their application.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I got it.
We heard from the, we heard from the fire marshal, we heard from the health department. What about the local traffic authority? Did they say anything? Nothing, right?
The application was referred to the local traffic authority. We have not received comments from them.
That's the same exact thing we did in the lesson. If they don't, you send them something like on 7th Cedric, if they don't comment, it means they don't have a problem.
Happens all the time. Not, not everyone, we refer it. We, we like to think that our office, if you will, over-refered it. If we're uncertain, you know what? Send it out, and if they have no comment, they have no comment, like in this case.
So this, you checked the boxes, the public works and services, the fire marshal he got back to?
Public works did not comment.
Okay, the building department, the accounts of their construction.
That's right.
Right, traffic authority, no, no answer.
No comment.
Health department, we heard from them.
Yep.
And half the town, sorry, we heard from that.
Yes, and the fire marshal as well.
Yeah, I said fire marshal. Okay. All right, I think that's it. So we heard everybody in the trucks said. Anything else to add, Mrs. Bush?
Not at this time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Would anybody in the general public like to speak to this application? Welcome, sir. Please state your name and affiliation to the record. And I really apologize, but maybe we're going to have to continue this thing. I've got to pick up my kid at the airport. So-
Understood. My name is John Nuff. I'm attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street in Milford, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Great Island Property Owners Association and William Carl Ziegler trustees. They are the owners of abutting and nearby parcels. They were referenced in my correspondence as the abutting owners.
So you sent us a letter on May 16.
I sent you a number of letters, and I'm happy to recite each of those that are for the record. There's a letter dated June 9, 2023, two memos.
It started on May 16. That's the first one. You said, please-
Yes.
-hold on, that you want your abutting neighbors. It says you represent the Great Island Property Owners Association, but do you represent all of them? Like, my guy said you never talked to them.
I represent the association itself, not the individual members, as well as the trustees who own abutting parcels.
So how many people are in the Great Island Property Association besides those five?
I, I don't know, and it's not relevant.
I'm just asking.
I don't know. I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know exactly how many members are in the Great Island Property Owners Association.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, can I go on?
Sure you can.
Okay. So I have submitted the following. A letter dated June 9, 2023, two memos that were referenced in that letter by solely engineering, a letter dated today regarding prior applications that was also referenced in that June 9 letter, letters dated May 16, 2023, and July 27, 2022, regarding the cease and desist, and a copy of the 2022 fire marshal reports. There was a lot of discussion regarding the Attorney Maslin memo. I don't believe that that is in the record. It ought to be, frankly, if you guys-
It was put in the record today.
It must have been late in the day.
Yep.
Okay, well-
Mr. Santi got it put in the record.
Okay, well, I, I think the hearing needs to be kept open then, so we have an opportunity Okay, well, I, I, I think the hearing needs to be kept open then, so we have an opportunity to respond. What I've heard is that since nineteen twenty, and I'll, we're gonna get into this more, since nineteen twenty-five, or before nineteen twenty-five, it may have been used for certain invitees, but it was never a commercial entity, a commercial for-profit entity, which is why the cease and desist was issued. Even if there were, on occasion, for-profits, non-conforming uses, your own regulations say that a non-conforming use is abandoned after sixty days. Sixty days. The claim that there was a continuous with no sixty-day lapses from nineteen twenty-five until today, frankly, is preposterous. The short answer is, on the cease and desist, and on the non-conformity, that if this was truly a non-conforming use, why are we all here? There would be no need for an application. The fact is, the cease and desist was issued, and there was, there was this attempt to rectify the cease and desist by applying, by submitting this application. If this were really non-conformity, there's no reason to be here.
That's your opinion?
No, I agree with you. It's, that's my, that's my opinion. That's the law.
That's your opinion?
That's what your regulations say. So, as noted in my client's own abutting parcels, over which the town proposes to access the Great Island property, including the stable property, the stable building. While this commission does not have the authority to determine rights to a private conveyance, the fact that access is not assured certainly is inconsistent with the typical approach a commission would take with regard to private property owners' rights in the context of a zoning application.
What, what access you're talking about?
There is a cul-de-sac.
It's owned by who?
Owned by my clients.
Who's your client?
I think that's clear. Great Island Property Owners Association.
But you don't know who they are.
And the, I don't know who the individual members are. Again, it's not relevant.
Person that owns the, the cul-de-sac?
Listen, I, I'm, I'm not gonna debate you on who.
I'm just asking a question. It's a simple question.
Okay. The, the simple matter is, the cul-de-sac property
Uh huh.
is owned by my clients, and it is subject to an easement that precludes public use. My point is that it is, I cannot imagine of another circumstance in which this commission would entertain an application that relied upon access through an easement when, when there was a question whether or not that easement was valid or not. That is, that is yet to be determined. My clients can enforce that at, at some point in the future. So it's not your purview to reconcile or to determine a party's rights, or parties plural, rights under an easement.
When, when we changed the subdivision line to facilitate the difference, that issue came up. And Wilder Gleason was the, the attorney for it. We have, there's rights to go across that, especially for fire trucks.
But not for the public. Not for the public.
We had to pull, we had to pull the file and check it.
Happy to. Not for the public.
Okay.
Okay.
Right now, the public's not going on it.
That's all I wanna say about the easement. That's all I wanna say about the easement. I just, I just want to make clear that, that the right of access is not.
Have you been out to the sign?
Is not certain.
Have you been out to the sign?
What's that?
Have you been out to the sign?
Yeah, May 10th.
Do you see the sign? What's it saying on the left and the right of front edges?
It doesn't matter.
Says no public access.
Right.
You just said public access. The sign says no public access.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not gonna debate you.
Write it out, not me.
If, if, if I could go on with my presentation, I think it will be clear.
That's fine. In your opinion. It says no public access.
As I set forth in my correspondence, there's no legal basis for approving the application because it simply does not comply with multiple vision in the regulations, and it's not even a close call. I noted that the application is tortured, and it's not a word that I chose lightly. In fact, it's laced with multiple, it's faced with multiple roadblocks in the regulations, any one of which requires a denial. The application contorts itself around the plain language of the regulations. Its other strategy is, rather than confront certain inconvenient facts head-on, is to simply pretend that they don't exist. Specifically, things such as the access issue, or the cease and desist, or the special permit site plan submission requirements, or that only one principal use is permitted on a parcel.
What's wrong with the special permit?
Or that serenity is a for-profit entity are never even mentioned in the application narrative.
What's wrong with the site plan?
What's that?
What's wrong with the site plan? You don't like this?
That's not a site plan. That's a survey of, of existing conditions.
Chairman, is this acceptable?
This is a survey, but in this case, nothing's changing from what's shown. The buildings are gonna be the buildings. The pathways are the pathways, whatever roads are the roads. Nothing is changing. So they're not adding onto a building. They're not constructing anything new. They're not dividing the property. They're not creating a new lot line. No new construction is a pro, proposed. What, presumably, what will be there next year, if the commission approves this, will be on that survey, because nothing is proposed to change externally.
So this was originally dated twenty twenty-two, was updated as of May of last year. Has anything changed between?
May of this year.
May fourth of twenty twenty-three.
Has anything changed between the two dates, when it was first submitted? I mean, I'm looking at the notes. I'm not saying that.
I'd have to take a closer look.
I, I think the point is, Mr. Chairman, as I'll get to, there should have been changes made, and we'll get to that. As I said in my letter, there should have been changes made.
To this survey?
There should be changes proposed to comply with your regulations. As a foundation for your review of the application
Okay.
is the cease and desist issued on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, which is never mentioned in the application materials. I understand that this application may seek to remedy the cease and desist, but that request is never made. More important than what the cease and desist says about this application, and that is that it is a new application that wholly stands on its own and may not rely upon or claim any non-conforming status in any regard, whether it's the use, the parking, the stormwater treatment, safe asset, access, anything. Which means that all the requirements of all the special permanent site plan applications apply in all respects. Simply because there is a structure, there was an accessory use to a private home, carries no weight. This is no different than one where to convert a barn where you had family parties into a commercial wedding venue. It is no difference. You have a private use on private property being turned to a commercial for-profit use.
She just said I can keep writing lessons here. What's private?
It is not for the private property owner. They are inviting the public in.
If I have a reservation, I can take a horseback riding lesson.
You're a member of the public.
Yeah. But if I have a reservation, I can go.
So the application itself, as described in the narrative, is exceedingly broad. It encompasses the entire sixty-plus acres. It proposes two different special permit uses that, if approved, cast a very wide net. Four oh four D is social, cultural, and recreational uses serving a convenient need or convenience, not including activity carried on for profit. Four oh four E is municipal buildings and uses and other government uses intended to serve the needs of local community. Secondly, there can be no time limit on a special permit. I cited case law, recent case law, that says a special permit does not, is not vacated by the passage of time. It does not expire. Only the site plan approval can expire. And because no plans have been submitted detailing what's gonna be proposed, or what should have been proposed, and approval would not be limited by what would otherwise be tick, be depicted on a set of site plans. As a result, if you approve the application as submitted, there will be virtually no geographical, temporal, or use limitations on the property, because anything can be, quote, "not for profit," even so long as it is on town-owned land. And to be clear, you'll be crossing the Rubicon and sanctioning a commercial use in a residential zone, or determining that a private commercial entity is somehow a municipal use or both. And that's why we believe that the public notice does not accurately set forth what is being requested in the special permit narrative, and why the application must be withdrawn.
So Uncle's Deli operates in a small portion of Reed Beach and Pear Tree Point Beach. You're saying that's illegal?
I'm sorry, can you say it one more time?
Uncle's Deli operates on Reed Beach.
Listen, there are, there are a lot of examples that I would be happy to research.
The Darien Boat Club operates on Pear Tree Point Beach.
Mr. Chairman, you say that's illegal? I would be happy. Give me a list. I'll research them, and I'll distinguish them. I don't know whether they even apply for a special permit, or what, or maybe they should have. But I'm not gonna debate other uses. What I know, this is to be true.
You're stating arguments.
You have a zoning violation currently. If it was truly non-conforming, why did they submit the application? I would like to go on. To be clear, we do not believe that the proposed use is permitted pursuant to either sections four oh four D or E. As for four oh four D, it precludes any use carried, carried on primarily for profit. It is abundantly clear that serenity is a for-profit enterprise, and indeed must be in order to pay its rent. And that rent has been mentioned frequently by town officials as a basis for this application to help defray the town's cost. Even the town is receiving income as well, so there's no basis for any claim that the proposed use is not primarily for profit as the cease and desist clearly recognizes. As for four oh four E, the stable is not a municipal use as that term is used in the regulations, or even in common parlance. And it's not even a quasi-municipal use, which also excludes uses carried on primarily for profit. It's interesting that the application does not ask for one or the other. It uses and/or between the two uses, which is another example of its tortured approach. You cannot have two principal uses, so it cannot be both. You cannot meld the two somehow to eradicate operable language such as "not primarily for profit." You cannot toss out a few choices and let the commission pick what use you are. Even if you could, neither is applicable. And last, approval of either one will result in two principal uses of the single-family homes and this new use, never mentioned in the application materials.
Okay, so over at Cherry Lawn Park, we have a park with a baseball field, tennis courts, a fishing pier, and a nature center. It's all along by the town in a residential zone.
Those could all be, listen, as I said.
For all principal uses?
No, I think it's all recreational. Here, clearly, two different. One is a residential use. The other is a commercial for-profit use. It's not permitted as a principal use, it's not permitted as an accessory use.
That's your opinion?
And you can't have two principal uses.
That's your opinion?
I'd be happy to bring it to court.
That's okay.
So the commission can and should stop its inquiry there. If the town has taken at its word that the only use for which it seeks approval is the stable, it does not fall within four oh four D or E, and indeed, there is no use in section four oh four that applies here. It is simply and clearly not permitted as a standalone use, as an accessory use, as not permitted in conjunction with another principal use. The stable violated the regulations in May of twenty twenty-two, when the CEO sent his first letter, and an approval by this commission will still violate the regulations, which, as I said, is a position we are willing to ask the Connecticut Superior Court to validate. If somehow the commission believes that the application's contortions have somehow avoided those obstacles, the town has simply not provided the requisite materials to make the required findings under your regulations. Again, there is no non-conforming on which the town can rely in any respect. So it is required to provide all the materials required by sections one thousand three and one thousand twenty. None were provided. And not only does that prevent you from making a determination as to compliance with one thousand four and one thousand five, but also prevents you from knowing what other applications may be required. With no parking plan, there's no idea if there's a wetland or other approvals required. So think about this. You propose a use, and you always have to say, so what's your, what's your parking need? Well, I'm gonna have seven hundred fifty square feet of restaurant space. And so I'm gonna have X number of spaces, and I'm gonna depict that on a site plan and show you that I have all those spaces, and I'm gonna pave it and treat the stormwater. None of that's been done here. And again, they can't rely on any non-conformity. The non-conforming status as to a parking field or anything else is nonexistent.
Why do you say that?
So frankly, it's stunning that the staff has rewarded.
Excuse me. Why do you say that there's no non-conformity? It's a bold statement.
Well, it's true.
We tried testimony to the contrary.
What, we have heard nothing to the contrary.
Sure we have.
We have, just a little bit, again.
No. Prior, when it was owned by William Ziegler, it was a private accessory recreational use.
That's not the testimony we heard.
The testimony we heard was that there were cer, on certain occasions, there were invitees, perhaps. I haven't seen the Maslin memo. It was just submitted at, at a late hour.
Sir, that is not the testimony we heard.
I'm, well, note, the testimony is the testimony. Again, I'm not gonna argue with you.
Okay.
But it is, there is no non-conforming. And to the extent that there.
So, but can you explain to me why you're saying that?
Yes, because there was never a commercial for-profit stable
What is your evidence of this?
on that property. I, I can't prove a negative.
So you have no evidence?
Right.
You have no evidence.
There's no, there's no evidence to the contrary.
But you have no evidence.
We had no evidence.
What would you like me to demonstrate to prove a negative? I can't do that. There is no evidence in the record to demonstrate that it's not conforming. And here's the best evidence I can give you, Mr. Chairman. Why did they submit an application? You haven't answered that. You, you like this parrying back and forth? I'll ask you a question. Why was an application submitted?
I'm not the applicant.
Okay. Alright, so let me go on then. Because there's no answer to that, other than the fact that there's no non-conforming that they can rely on.
You have also no answer to who is in the Greater Island Properties Association. You don't even know who the client is.
So it is simply stunning that the staff has rewarded the town with non-compliance by waiving a CAM application, because they should show a parking area. It should be paved. It should be treated with stormwater. And likely, that was gonna require a CAM application. None required. In sum, the town declined to make the required improvements and depict them on the site plan. Because the required improvements are not depicted, the staff claims there's no work taking place, even though there clearly should be. And this all took place only after we submitted our letter, bringing it to their attention. The problem is that section eight thirteen provides that all uses, this is what your CAM regulations say, uses, all new uses within the coastal water shall be subject to coastal site plan review. So even if no work is proposed, this is a new use. You had a cease and desist, and now there's a new commercial for-profit stable use under four oh four D and four oh four E, otherwise why submit the application that required CAM submission?
So it's been in operation since nineteen ninety-nine as a stable with different property owners that switch the different.
A private, a private stable, Mr. Chairman, we're not gonna resolve this.
I know we're not.
So you can keep on, you know, trying to tweak me, but I don't care.
That's fine.
There is no exemption where no work is proposed, and there isn't a waiver provision in the CAM regulations. In, in short, there is no way around the submission of a CAM application. And in that same vein, just several hours ago, the staff has continued putting its fingers in the dike by issuing a stormwater management waiver. Again, had compliant plans been submitted, as they must for a new application, stormwater treatment would have had to be proposed. And the examples are completely irrelevant to this application. In each of the zoning compliant, parking, in each, each of those, a zoning compliant parking and stormwater management plan had been submitted and approved. All the examples in Jeremy's memo. There was, it was a new tenant, re-tenanting existing space where there's an existing parking field that was paved, that had existing stormwater treatment. That's not the case here. This application seeks to maintain conditions that were created a hundred twenty-five years ago. Nothing like similar to what Jeremy put in his memo. That's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Beyond the missing CAM application and the stormwater plan, the town has failed to supply any of the required special permit and site plan submission requirements, including parking, lighting, and particularly safe access. All is detailed in my letter and in the Sully memo. And Kevin's gonna address his memo in a moment. It is notable that while the applicant, application's been referred to the fire marshal, building, traffic, health, and the town historian, only the health department and the town historian have replied. Again, I didn't know that the fire marshal had issued a, a late memo. I did submit the two thousand twenty-two fire marshal report, which suggests that increased usage will necessitate fire protection capabilities. I don't really know what that means, but don't you wanna know? You're gonna have children there. You have horses there. I mean, I think you wanna know what the fire marshal is referring to, when he says, you know, they may wanna increase, increase the fire protection capabilities. It could be access, could be sprinkler. I don't know, but I think we ought to find out. And of course, the health department letter raises a veil of concern. Here's my last three points. Section one thousand four requires compliance with all aspects of section one thousand three, and the failure to provide those results results in either a defective application or denial. That is the case here. Section one thousand four is very clear. You don't, you don't submit the required documents. Either, either the, the application gets tossed, or you deny it. Beyond that, section one thousand five point C requires a finding that, that the application satisfies the objectives for site plan approval. With no site plan, you cannot make that finding. Last, section one thousand five point E requires a finding regarding safe access, and given the one-lane driveway, you cannot make that finding. Now, I'm gonna introduce Kevin, but to be clear, the application does not propose a permitted use in the zone, and even if it. a permitted use in the zone, and even if it did, the failure to supply any of the required materials prevents this commission from making an informed decision. The application should be withdrawn, the cease and desist enforced, access fully resolved, and then the town can commence in its planning process without this cloud over its head. If the town refuses to withdraw it, the application should be denied, because even a continuation cannot remedy its multiple fatal infirmities. So Kevin?
I'll have to stop it here. I have to go pick up my daughter at the airport, so we have to continue this hearing until the next time.
Yes, as with the fire application, we're going to continue this. Commission members, you've said you can all make it next Tuesday, the 20th? 7:30 PM?
Door through me.
Room 119 at Town Hall.
I apologize, everybody. I think my daughter coming back from Spain is important. She's already, well, one of our daughter's already landed. So, Mr. Vice Chairman, will you please take over the rest of the meeting?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. So, being that the hearings continue, I'll ask Ms. Barzanti to come back.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, sure.
Try five?
Nope.
At a clock, one of us taking Uber for $150.
Oh, my God.
Thank you.
Would you keep staying longer?
I see you have a hundred bucks, a hundred and thirty dollars.
No.
Two hundred and sixty.
All right, we are on the general meeting. The first of which is the special permit application number 261-A. 770 Boston Post Road, Darien LLC, I'm sorry, I should not have spelled that. 770 BPR Darien LLC, Trizia Jewelry at 770 Boston Post Road. Proposal to establish a 220-plus-or-minus-square-foot custom jewelry design studio in a portion of the first-floor space formerly occupied by Allstate Insurance Company. So we're deliberating. Any comments, questions, concerns on this one? Do we have?
You have a draft resolution in your packet. You may recall that the hearing was June 6th, which is just last week, and the commission gave us the indication that there were no significant concerns or issues and asked staff to draft up a resolution. So, very straightforward. Again, you may recall, ironically, it's an existing building with an existing parking area. There were no changes to the structure at all. Monica Patricia Lasblosi, the applicant, said it was ironically also generally by appointment open to the public.
Did she submit a parking plan for this?
Site plan?
Site plan review?
We inspired about it.
Did she do a full CAM review for this?
The draft resolution is in your packets.
I have no thoughts on this. I did not see any issues or typos, except for one, because you know how I like to nitpick thread on point G. You said Section 7 as one word, and I believe you indicated a space to be there.
That's correct. That was on me.
Other than that, it looked pretty good to me.
We count the seconds we just spent on that issue, shall we?
Thank you.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve this here resolution. Thank you, Ms. Barzanti, Mr. Kurt. Valga.
Valga.
Seconded, all in favor, please?
Forty-zero. Thank you.
That's got her jewelry still.
Okay. 142 Near Water, I am recused from, so I'm afraid we can't do any more.
We skipped that one.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
No, well, right, one option, George, would certainly be for, you've been recused on this, to stay in the room as part of the quorum and abstain if you wish to pursue it that way.
Does anybody want to, do we have a resolution?
We have a draft resolution for 142 Near Water and 155 Near Water in your packets.
Okay. So there'd be no objection to my hanging here and hearing any issues you folks want to?
But we can't vote on it, because we have-
Yeah, you would have potentially, right, four for a quorum, you would need three votes to get it to pass.
I, again, have no issues with this.
On this one, Part C, we covered the main engineer for the site monitor, which we discussed, and I did not see any typos or scripters errors in this one, so it was good, good to me. It was good.
I make a motion to approve this draft.
Thank you, Ms. Barzanti. All in, three to zero.
George, right. Thank you all.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
All right, so then we have discussions and deliberations only?
We have 155 Near Water.
Where is it? Where's that on the list? Oh, right, I skipped over it, sorry. So this is Estu Coastal Site Plan Review 227D Flood Damage Prevention Application 254-C Land Filling and Regrading Application Number 459 Site Plan Application 253B Special Permit Town and Darien Wee Beach Park 155 Near Water Lane Proposal to construct a six paddleball court. And we have a, yes, we do. And the proposed resolution, comments, questions, nitpicks? Numbing?
I just have a question for Jeremy. I noticed on this one, we don't need the as-built survey, which I think might be one of the very few times I've ever seen us waiving that requirement, so I just want to make sure that's okay. I mean, I don't have, I don't have an issue with it, but it's just out of the ordinary, so.
When we were writing this up, one of the things that we looked at in Condition K is, you know, what's the important aspect here? It's in the flood zone, they made representations that, hey, the propane's going to be up, that the lights are going to be, and it's going to be at a certain elevation. So what we've said is the final elevation. And then the next sentence, we debated a little bit. Do we want an as-built showing exactly where it is? Because with the presumption that, hey, when the town has a large parcel like this, you know, they do one thing, and then they do another thing. And so it's always good to have an updated survey at the ready for whatever occasion. And then we said, well, what if we, so we went back and forth on exactly this question. We said, ah, but it's in the middle of a park, it's not near a property line, and it's on the landward side of the water, and it's surrounded on two sides by other courts. So we went back and forth, back and forth, and we said, let's put it forth this way. The commission can always say, you know what, just do the as-built survey, because you're going to need one anyways the next time you come before the commission for something in this park. We leave the ultimate decision up to the commission. Could go either way, we'd be okay with it either way. It's likely that, again, when they come to the park to do something in the future, they'll have to resurvey to include an update. So I leave it to you, Ford.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't have any real issue with not, not having it. Like, as you said, if they want to put a new, another pickleball court in in two years now or something, they'll need to do a survey, period. It's just odd. It's the first time I can even remember not seeing it as a condition of approval.
Thoughts are pretty much, it could go either way.
Could go either way.
I'll make a motion to approve this draft.
Okay, a second?
Looks like you have a question.
I, I can, I can go either way with regards to, but I do like the consistency if we're required. We generally would require it, and they're going to have to do it.
She's discussing until there's a second? Is there a second?
No, no, I think she's, she's still off the point of whether she's going to second. Meaning, she's not discussing the approval, she's discussing a change.
Okay, well, all right, second or don't?
So she's saying, no, I'm not second. I like the consistency of having an as-built, so I'll amend my motion.
I think I like the consistency of having an as-built.
Yep. Modify Condition K to require as-built.
Yes, please. And I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay, is there a second? Okey-dokey, good. All in favor?
Forty-zero. Thank you all.
Okey-dokey. Coastal Site Plan, Coastal Site Plan Review Number 375 and Filling and Regrading Application Number 550 WZ III 2002 Trust FBO MJ Ziegler 95 Long Neck Point Road. Proposal to construct a new four-bedroom single-family dwelling on a now vacant lot.
I am, I am recused from this one.
You're recused, okay. We had a fairly thorough discussion-
I can stay in the room, and so you have a quorum, but yes.
Thorough discussion of the various setbacks, but other than that, we didn't have any particular issues and nothing we can do about the setbacks, so are we generally and favorably disposed? I am.
I didn't see any issues. We can't really enforce the setbacks. I mean, it's a little weird that future owners will have to potentially enforce those, but it's not our job, so it's fine.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Positive review?
Are we good?
We'll try to get something for-
I had to take a second to remember what we were talking about. It was a private, a private house, their building. I still think, like I said on the record, I think that that's going to cause some problems down the road in trying to enforce against the other neighbors, but it's their, their problem.
Civil nightmare.
Okay, Coastal Site Plan Review Number 376 and Land Filling and Regrading Application Number 551 RRE Holdings LLC 244 Long Neck Point Road. Proposal to construct a 20-by-50 in-ground pool on the southern portion of the site and perform related site development activities, et cetera.
This is the one that was over the step, right?
Yeah, the weird.
Yes.
I still find it very strange that the Department of Health wants the, call it, old, old soil to be not moved away, but put back, but that's what they say, there's no problem for me.
Yeah, I think the problem is, it's contaminated, right? So if you, if you move it off-site, you got to dispose of it as contaminated material.
Ship it to anyone.
Yeah, it's very expensive.
They don't even want them to ship it out. They didn't even, they said, not even, they didn't even give them the option of saying, do you want to spend X dollars to ship it off-site, or do you want to keep it? They just said, you must keep it, which seems odd to me, but if that's what they say, that's, that's the Department of Health.
Yeah, they can increase the risk of contamination.
Yes, and run off when you're digging it up.
I get it.
Otherwise, the pool is fine.
And somebody will notice if there's effluence coming to grade as they, you know.
We just have, we just have to put, if I remember correctly, in the condition of approval, we need to get the sequence of events right, as per the Department of Health's letter, right? So they have to be hooked up to the town sewer before they can start digging the thing up. So it's like a bit of a sequencing, which we don't usually see.
Correct. Thank you.
Better than that.
Okay.
Okay.
Then, the proposed amendments of zoning regulations, the Code of Zoning Regulation Number 1, 2023, the Site Plan Application Number 310-A, Special Permit Application Number 324-A, Flood Damage Prevention Application Number 425-A, Seven Cedric Avenue LLC, Seven Cedric Avenue. Proposal to amend Section 726 Sub-13 of the zoning regulations to increase the maximum floor area of dwelling units in the central business district from 1,000 to 1,600 square feet. Proposal to amend Section 726 Note F, of the zoning regulations to allow third-floor dwelling units as incentive units under the inclusionary zoning regulations and to clarify the residential parking requirements in the central business district. Proposal to raise the existing bank building on the site, convert and redevelop the property as multifamily residential and to perform related site development activities, et cetera. Okay, where are we? Where are we going?
We spent a lot of time last week, in fact, I was working on the minutes earlier today. We all took the blue sheet, we're talking about, I think the commission adequately covered the topics of the zoning regulation amendments last time, last week. We talked about the Architecture Review Board, the size of the buildings, parking, loading, circulation. We talked about the possible improvements to Cedric. Mike, I remember Mike talking about the fact that they need a transformer on a platform to meet the flood regulations, and they'll need access to that, so we need to build an area around it, stairways up to it with a railing, and that's not shown on the plans. We talked a little bit about the sidewalks, the entrance and exits, we talked about the dumpsters last time. Very briefly, we, I think we talked about last time that the Sewer Commission gave this an okay, I think we talked about that.
Yes.
Stormwater management is in the parking garage, and they submitted a stormwater management plan that was peer-reviewed by Jill Canis Italian Bond, who gave it an all-clear in terms of addressing issues. We talked about refuse collection, the rollouts of dumpsters. I think we talked about how many dumpsters, making sure there's adequate area for that. And-
Last week.
Last week. And then what we didn't talk about last week were the two peer-review comments. Italian Bond, I said, as I mentioned, reviewed the engineering and stormwater, and Greg, you may recall, Greg Del Rio from Hardisty and Hanover, peer-reviewed the traffic and parking. And then you have the standards on the second page about special permits and the standards for that, so.
And we, did we still not get the fire marshals?
I didn't get those. In fact, that came up as a question. Can I have a little blue post-it here, which I will email you all in the next day or two or for your packets going out this Thursday? The local traffic authority comment, legal traffic authority, and the fire marshal comments.
Yeah, because I think that-
So those are going back in your packets.
Yeah.
I think we heard them early on in the process, and this is a few months later, so I'll get those out.
I think the whole premise of this garage being in a floodplain and potentially, you know, the process of getting cars out in a, in a storm event and that evacuation process, that is not something that we should take lightly. I think we really need to understand that. I think that's a very critical component of us evaluating this application.
I agree 100%.
Good, okay.
I think we want to keep deliberations open too, so that Jeff, our resident fire expert, can at least weigh in, and is he going to be here for next week or this following week?
I believe he will be here.
So we'll put this on next week? Next week's agenda is likely to look like tonight's agenda in many ways, sadly, but we appreciate you taking the time out, so.
Can you give us an updated blue sheet too, next week?
Yes, we'll include this in the packets for updated.
So we have, just as a refresher.
Were you able, were you able to look into the parking issue? Remember, there's some debate as to whether the amendment was necessary to have a conforming parking.
We'll report back on that next week as well, yeah.
Because I think that's an important distinction to make. If their application is nonconforming without the amendment to the regulations and inclined not to re-admon into the regulations, I think that's a good data point to be aware of.
Yeah, agreed. We'll get you an answer on that.
And if you wouldn't also mind, if there's any additional information that you think we need to be aware of with regards to three stories require a public plaza, if there's any additional meat that you think would be relevant to our deliberations, I would welcome that as well.
You got it. Thank you all.
All right.
Continue those deliberations till-
Next week.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I was thinking of taking this opportunity to answer a question, but don't need to, okay, that's fine. All right, then. Tonight, I don't imagine we want to, we didn't close anything tonight, right?
Correct.
We're all set. So the chairman's report, oh, I've been looking forward to this opportunity.
How sorry.
Okay, I won't take more than 15 minutes. I just want you to know, it's been a pleasure. Okay, any other business?
Oh, you're funny.
Okay, entertaining motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Nader, Mr. Valga.